Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As clerk of the Board of Supervisors of Notaway County, I call this meeting to order. At this time, Mr. Supervisor Bowen, would you provide an invocation?
Yes, sir. So, Lord, again, we've come together in this new year, and all the strange the way the world is getting, and maybe it's just maybe I'm getting older and not thinking back to follow. In one, one week, we're wearing shorts and short sleeve shirts, and next week, we're pulling our snowplows. Follow, we know you control all things. We just ask you to be with us and guide us, and we thank you for the service that Mr. Vaughn had done as his chairman last year in keeping us together, and follow, we ask for the same thing for the next chairman, just be with that person who got him the lead as well, and guess all these things. In Jesus Christ, I always say that.
Amen. Thank you, sir. As you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Honorable members of the Board of Supervisors staff, ladies and gentlemen, good evening and happy new year. The purpose of this meeting is to organize the Board of Supervisors of Notaway County until its organizational meeting in 2023. First, as your agenda indicates, this meeting was originally intended to be held three nights ago, but due to the weather conditions, it was postponed to this evening. Allow me to note that with the governor's declaration of emergency last night for incoming weather tonight, uh, that declaration being retroactive to Monday. As chairman of the Board of Supervisors for 2021, Supervisor Vaughn has declared a local emergency. Your staff is maintaining situational awareness, coordinating with stakeholders such as the school system and first responders, and taking those actions necessary to enhance public safety. Second, as you can see, the board has returned to social distancing due to an increase in COVID cases in large part connected to the Omicron variant. Third, it is my honor and pleasure to conduct this meeting up to the point where the chair has been elected. Then it will be my greater honor and pleasure to relinquish the gavel to the chair, who will conduct the remainder of the meeting, which will include the election of a vice chair, the determination of dates for regular Board of Supervisors meetings, appointments, determination of work sessions, and then discussions regarding the major projects facing the county in consideration of the budget in order for staff to receive guidance and direction from the board. Therefore, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented, noting the date change from January 3, 2022 to January 6, 2022.
Minister Cawson moves it through the general.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Abstentions, the ayes have it. I'll now entertain nominations for the position of chair for the Notaway County Board of Supervisors, serving until the organizational meeting of the board in 2023. Yes, Mr. Vaughn. Do I have a second? I have a second from Ms. Simmons.
I make a motion to close the floor for nominations.
I have a motion to close nominations in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Abstentions, the ayes have it. Do I have a motion to, uh, as to the nomination of Supervisor Shuckleton to serve as the chair of the Notaway County Board of Supervisors until the organizational meeting of the board in 2023? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Abstentions, the ayes have it. Congratulations Supervisor Shuckleton on your election as chair, and I now gladly present to you the gavel.
Thank you, Lord. I look forward to serving as the vice chair of 2022. Being new to the role, I definitely appreciate the fact that there are preseason board members here who previously filled this position, and I'm sure I'll be seeking your support and guidance throughout the year. Mr. Vaughn, thank you for leading us throughout 2021, and when you step into this position and begin as a chair, you announce goals for the year. Although I haven't established any formal goals, I do have a vision for our board this year. Once we agree on our top strategic priorities, I hope that we'll be able to maintain the focus on these priorities and reach the end of 2022 comfortable with the progress that we've made toward achieving our objectives. So that said, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the election of a vice chairman. Nominations are now in order for the position of vice chair for the Notaway County Board of Supervisors.
Madam Chair, uh, the, as well, a lot of the board members know, and as well as you know, and I've had spoken to Mr. Costin a little bit about this, um, my job duties at Piedmont Hospital has, um, increased tremendously, and I would not be doing the citizens or this board a service, be doing access to this service if I accept as vice chair. So, Madam Chair, I make a motion that John Ward be vice chairman of the county board of supervisors.
All right. Mr. John Ward has been nominated as vice chairman. Are there second to the nomination?
Madam Chair, I will accept that motion.
Okay. We have a nomination and second for Supervisor Vaughn to serve as vice chair. Are there any other nominations for the office of vice chair?
I make, I make a motion to close the floor.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to close, the motion to close the floor for nominations. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, the usual sign.
Aye.
All right, that's that. So the floor is now closed for nominations. So as to the nomination of Mr. Ward for the office of vice chair, um, you make a motion to approve the nomination of Mr. Ward?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion on the floor for approval. Sean, we have a second. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve the nomination of Supervisor Ward to the office of vice chair, please indicate by usual sign.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, indicate by nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries in favor of Supervisor Ward to serve as vice chair under board supervisors. Congratulations Supervisor.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Next item on the agenda, um, to establish dates, time, place of the board's regular monthly meetings. First went to the board's rules of procedure, the time and place of regular meetings of the board supervisors shall be established at its annual organizational meeting. The rules of procedure set forth at regular meetings shall be held at Notaway Courthouse on the third Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM. And I believe the county administration staff has provided everyone a list of dates for the regular, um, meetings during 2022. Is there a motion for the board to continue holding its regular monthly meetings as set forth in the current version of our rules and procedures?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor indicated by usual sign.
Aye.
All opposed, indicate by nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. The regular monthly board meetings will be held at Notaway Courthouse on the third Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM. Our next on our agenda are the appointments to the local emergency planning committee and the redistricting committee. Mr. Costin, would you like to speak to these appointments?
Thank you, ma'am chairman. You have a cover memo from me from January 3, which speaks to these two appointments, where I know that the board has done away with established committees. I do want to note that this is a local, uh, emergency planning committee is a much larger, complex, uh, group than just the board members. Uh, the idea behind the LEPC, as you recall from a work session earlier, well, um, earlier in my tenure, uh, with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, it's very much a community, whole community concept. Uh, there is, however, a requirement in the, uh, legislation, federal legislation, that an elected official serve in the LEPC, uh, as a member. Um, reviewing the board's individual assignments on various committees, uh, the regional jail board, uh, um, the Department of Social Services, the, uh, the CRC, uh, what we found was, uh, that Supervisor Shuckleton, Chairman Shuckleton, um, did not have any outside appointments. With the chairmanship, she is also serving now as the director of emergency management, and staff believes it would be appropriate and send a strong signal to the larger community of how committed the board is for, uh, emergency management for that position to serve as the, uh, in, in representing the, as an elected official, uh, on the LEPC. I have a suggested motion for you. Um, ma'am chairman, do you wish to take that item up first, and then I'll come back for the redistricting committee?
Yeah. We'll now entertain a motion relating to Mr. Costin's recommendation that the chairman of the Notaway County Board of Supervisors be appointed to the local emergency planning committee.
Madam Chair, I move that the chairman of the Notaway County Board of Supervisors be appointed to the local emergency planning committee as they are the county's emergency management director.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion? We have a motion and a second, that the chairperson of the Notaway County Board of Supervisors be appointed to the local emergency planning committee. All in favor, please indicate by usual sign.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by nay.
Madam Chair, I was wondering, considering that position, how would you have gotten all them people on that back?
Relinquished the position. That was something. All right, the ayes have it, and the motion carries.
All right, the, the other appointment that staff is suggesting is that the Notaway County Board of Supervisors as a whole serve as the redistricting committee. Uh, obviously, the work of this committee will continue until the redistricting, uh, is done. Uh, this is going to be a significant project for the year. But we are also recommending that serving on the, uh, committee as ex officio members are Ms. Tyler Scott, representing the local Republican Committee, Mr. Thomas Cruz, representing the local Democratic Committee, Ms. Arlene Robertson, representing the NAACP, and Mr. Rodney Reynolds, the Notaway County Registrar. Uh, as is always the case, uh, your staff will support, uh, these activities, uh, and that will include the Commonwealth Regional Council staff, uh, as well as the, um, uh, new, um, Planning and Economic Development Director, myself, and the county, uh, county legal staff. Be happy to take any questions you all have on the matter.
For clarification, just to make sure we are all standing. And I'm okay with the committee, but bottom line is, this board is the one who votes the redistrict.
At the end of the day, yes, sir.
The committee will make recommendations when you vote.
Yes, sir. Uh, for my conversations, just for insight, uh, there is no set pattern on how the redistricting committee is formed. Some localities are using one board member and, uh, their registrar and an attorney. Some are using, uh, individual citizens from each of their respective districts. There's no set pattern that, way that you have to do this.
Thanks.
All right, the floor is open for a motion relating to Mr. Costin's recommendation for the redistricting committee.
Madam Chair, I move the board supervisors of Notaway County to establish themselves as the redistricting committee of Notaway County and have ex officio members, Mr. Tyler Scott, Mr. Thomas Cruz, Ms. Arlene Robinson, and Mr. Rodney Reynolds.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by usual sign.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please indicate by nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. The Notaway County Board of Supervisors will serve as the county's redistricting committee with the four previously identified individuals serving as ex officio members. All right, the next item on the agenda is the scheduling of the board's 2022 work sessions. Mr. Costin, would you like to speak with this?
Ma'am chairman, members of the board, uh, again, in the cover memo to this meeting, I've indicated that, uh, and giving you this evening a revised budget schedule, there are going to be a significant number of work sessions related to the, uh, the budget. Uh, and as I presented this schedule several couple of months ago, it's already had undergone some revision. The only, uh, recommendation that I can have at this, have at this point is that the redistricting work session scheduled for January 13, 7:00 PM in the VDH conference room, uh, go forward. Uh, I will let you know that we are close to being able to, uh, achieve the video, uh, communication capacity that we want in that room for that meeting, and I see no reason that we, uh, we need to make an adjustment. Uh, I'll, I'm ninety-five percent sure that we can go forward on that date at that time at that place. Uh, beyond that, uh, I believe it's, uh, uh, it's up to you all. We have on that budget schedule, um, the initial presentation of the budget, February, uh, 10, uh, which, at which time, you all have asked for a work session on the, uh, revenue impacts of solar, and Mr. Anzavina will be presenting that information at that time. So it will be a, uh, sort of a dual-hatted, um, you know, purpose in that, uh, February 10 meeting, and that is because of the close, the impact that the solar could, uh, revenues could have on our budget. Be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Mr. Costin, would the appropriate motion tonight could be to approve the January 13th and future meetings as needed? How would you?
I would recommend that and include the February 10 as a work session, uh, with, certainly with the, uh, revenue, the solar revenue impacts on that agenda. And for, and as, as has been the board's practice, if I, if I may, these are the second Thursday of the month, which is, I understand, you know, in my short tenure, I understand that's been the tradition.
Madam Chair, if there's no more stuff to go, I, I recommend that we accept opposed FY 2022, 2023 budget calendar, as well as the work session January 13th, 7:00 PM in the conference room, and if that worked, that work session, uh, go to the budget and stick with it, and all of those one motions, continue speaking of work sessions the second Thursday, boys, except for that.
And we're doing as needed, right on that schedule then.
I think we're doing the same thing.
You get a special.
Right, but you put it on the calendar. I'm, I'm asking, put it, all I'm asking is put it on the calendar, and, and we would schedule it as needed. You see what I'm saying? You just have, in other words, you schedule it, but if you don't, if we don't have a meeting, we don't have anything to work on, we don't have anything to work. That's what I saw.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. You, you understand what I'm saying? I'm sure I'll do it, and then you go happy with it. Okay. So that should do that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, um, I'd like to raise objection to continuing past February 10 on the school board night. There's, uh, citizens that have, since I've been on this board, have objected to having to choose between going to a public meeting at school or choosing to come to a work session. I have no objection to the nights of the 13th and the 10th, but I think moving forward, um, we should not put the citizens in that situation where they have to choose which meeting they want in.
Well, one's a meeting, one's a work session. Just want to clarify that.
Right.
And, and you can't say anything in a work session.
Right, because citizens still want to attend a meeting.
And they can't say anything, but it's on tape, right?
Right.
I understand.
Well, it's just like some people around have a face-to-face conversation and a phone call conversation.
Right, but they can't have any conversation, because it's not, it's not, it's a work session.
But this is the citizens' work session.
No, it's our work session. The citizens, citizens can look at it, they can't speak at a work session. Am I correct?
Who put us here?
They vote, I'm not saying that, John, I'm saying.
This is, everything we conduct is for the citizens.
Well, anything, any other calendar date you put on that, what's, so what's your, what's your option? Tell me where it is, because it's got, I'll count it too, because we're the ones working.
Well, you've got two, you're going to win. You've got Mondays, Tuesdays. Oh, that same one?
Madam Chair.
So we have, all right, procedures, we're all going to help me out here. We have a motion and a second on the floor, and we have an objection.
Yeah, the motions, unless I amend the motion, I amend the motion, yeah.
All right, so we can.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a count motion. That the Notaway County Board of Supervisors hold its work session on January 13th and February 10th afterwards, no longer holding work sessions on school board nights.
So the motion is second and we have a motion.
Do you need some help?
Yes, if you would.
Mr. Bowen has to accept the counter motion and replace his motion with John's.
John, the motion needs a second priority. A substitute motion takes priority. If there's a second in the substitute motion, that motion takes priority.
It's a substitute.
If he gets a second.
All right, so we have a substitute motion on the floor.
Yeah, so if we have a second. Did you have, hold on, hold on a second.
All right.
Chair calls that.
So you guys will have the second. We'll go back to the original motion. Second.
Oh, excuse me. For a, for a clarification discussion, Madam Chair, if you don't mind. Oh. So we're looking at calendars, look back a little bit, if you can, and I, and let me just say this. I'm the school board, I'm, I'm, I'm not changing my, I, I, I have certain things in place too in my life, and I'm not changing because of the school board, but, but I hate to bother citizens, I, not, but, uh, I'm not sure right there, but let me say this. We used to have, the reason why we said this, everybody will know, the second, we had third Thursday was board meeting, fourth Thursday was EDC, when it was Economic Development Committee, planning committee was the same week as board, and then it spread the mayonnaise across the calendar. That's what it was. That's the whole purpose of it. We didn't have to have so much in one week, and then we can still have time to think about that. And the other reason for, for, for this work session is because you have a work session prior, prior, but you're not, you're not, I'm, I'm hearing from Mr. Roy, he's not arguing that, he's looking at the same week, but you have a work session prior to your board meeting, so you could talk about discussion things, and so we kind of have an idea which way we want to head on, and, and the staff will have it on the agenda, right? Okay. And, and you, and you'll say it was the same week, John, but you're not saying, you're saying not Thursday, but Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, of that same week.
Yes, sir.
All right, so what's your view on the conflict?
Some, I don't know.
It's just not a major, such a major conflict.
Well, what about county papers? I remember, yes, I suppose, what is tell case wins, and if I?
Cruz, second Monday, Blackstone, third Monday, Burford, third Tuesday. Yeah, Burford's the third Tuesday in the month.
I think it's the second Tuesday.
It's one of those Tuesdays. Where, where the third Monday?
So my citizens in Burford, of the county council, they can't, you know what I'm saying?
We're the second Monday.
You just don't conflict with something, that's.
Right. Forgot all about Wednesday.
All right, so we have a motion, Mr. Bowen's motion to approve the budget calendar for January 13th, February 10th, workshops, and for scheduling future workshops, workshops from the second Thursday of the month. And that's, give that and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am chair, could, could we, oh, chief, huh?
Chief, I have a motion.
She just hasn't given any more discussion. If we, can we separate the motion? Can we separate the motion to identify further, because I would be in favor of the budget calendar and the two scheduled work sessions, but not in favor of the Thursday moving forward?
You, you're trying to clarify what you voted on. So I will amend my, I will amend my motion for, for, for this purpose of, um, I will, um, the motion is to accept the budget calendar as presented, and, and the, and the, and the redistricting work session is scheduled January 13th and the work session for budget, which is February 10th, which is actually on the budget calendar. Got you, okay.
All right, so we have Mr. Bowen's amended motion on the floor. Is there a second to the amended motion?
Second.
Any discussion about the amended motion? All in favor, please indicate by usual sign.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please indicate by nay. The ayes have it, the amended motion, the amendment carries. And Mr. Bowen, do you want to introduce an additional amendment to your motion to about the second Thursday?
No motion. I'm sticking, I'm in motion.
No, she called, I thought, she called my new motion.
So do you, I'm sorry, I'm in.
No, I, I'm, I'm still sticking with, I made a motion to be scheduled, put it on the calendar, in this board calendar, the second Thursday at seven o'clock, as we've done before this year. That's it.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion about the second Thursday? All in favor, please indicate by usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by nay.
Don't vote.
And if the ayes have it, and the motion carries. All right, um, the final within the items denied prior to our vernon is a specific project presentation by Mr. Costin. Costin, would you have a vote?
Thank you, ma'am chairman, members of the board. So if you'll recall back during the, uh, fiscal transition phase between Mr. Anzavino, the interim county administrator, and myself, uh, there were references to the list of fifty-two projects, and, uh, I think there was a, a joking, a joking reference on my part that fifty-two projects, one a week, will be done, no problem. Um, so that project list has grown, but some things have come off that project list as well. And, um, I shared the project list with you under separate cover, asking that you identify for the staff your priority projects, and, uh, we've got it set up over here that, uh, Ms. Tomer is going to capture your, um, your list, uh, off of, uh, your, your top five, individually, your top five. I'm going to do it alphabetically, uh, so, Mr. Bowen, that's a, that's a little bit of a heads up, and then as we capture these, if they're repeated by any other board member, we'll, we'll mark and, uh, take a look at it to see just kind of where, where we fall out.
I got your list running out.
Oh. Um. We, we got a couple of, uh. Okay, so, um, you can, uh, if we can refer to them by number, so I can give a quick, uh, description, and if there's a, a notable update. However, I want you to know going into this, this process that there was a staff level meeting yesterday, uh, with, uh, Davenport, your financial advisors, and you'll find that their names are referenced in here, and there's some good news and there's some bad news. Uh, the good news is financially, we're pretty well set, uh, have a nice, nice reserve. Uh, the bad news is the landfill, and staff has already turned its attention to, uh, looking at some, uh, adjustments to how things are managed at the landfill and how they are, uh, processed on the financial side in the, in the county administration office, um, as well as what other steps might be necessary to, uh, right, uh, get that, that ship a little bit better righted. Uh, it's not for lack of, of staff effort, it's, it's basically the, uh, the confines that, uh, exist, and we're going to address those as the, uh, we close out this fiscal year and look to, uh, make some improvements in the next fiscal year. But again, But again, good news, financially sound, very financially sound. That'll be shared with you as we get deeper into the budget process and, and the Davenport presentation is refined, um, but you're going to find that, uh, there are going to be about, let's say, there are ninety-five counties in the state, eighty-five are going to go, wow, I wish we were not away. Um, but again, we do have a couple weak spots that we need to, to shore up. So, Mr. Bowen, could you give us your, uh, your, your, your top projects?
So just, um, after passing that, I'm asking, uh, how, how, my new goal this year is to realize that the world around me, you should.
Okay.
But I would like to do this way, do okay, let me do one project, I like to deal with the board, all right, and then I'll do my second project, because I don't mind, but I, I will not like to do my all five projects.
Okay, all right.
Number twenty-nine.
Number twenty-nine. Sounds like we might be playing bingo tonight. All right, number twenty-nine. Number twenty-nine, courthouse facility plan implementation and registrar's office relocation. Okay, twenty-nine courthouse facility plan implementation and registrar's office location. On this project, uh, in fact, we even had conversations today with the, uh, Blackstone Fire Chief, uh, they're going to undertake, uh, the burning of the barn building, uh, by the end of the month. And, uh, they're going to look at it, may have to assess whether or not they can do any kind of burn portion on the remain, on the, on the house, the main house. But demolition of that particular, uh, property to clear the land, I would anticipate could be done by the end of this fiscal year. Uh, and then we turn our attention to, uh, engineering, architectural efforts, funding efforts. Uh, this is an item on the, uh, Davenport, uh, that's on Davenport's radar as well. So, Madam Chairman, do you want to call another board members to, to comment, or, Mr. Bowen, am I, am I understanding that right? You're loo- looking for comments from the other board members?
And then let the next person do their priority one, and now.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. I've got you now, okay. Uh, again, doing it, uh, alphabetically, then, uh. Madam Chairman, uh, what would be your number one?
That's okay.
Well, I, I identified five.
Do you have, do you have a, I, I think from what Mr. Bowen wants to. Um.
Oh, yeah, we were great off, right, so, and animals are high fella, so.
It's, it's taken me five minutes, five months to figure you guys out alphabetically by last name, so don't, yeah, go ahead, give me. Okay, you're five.
But so, um.
Yes.
First of all, Mr. Austin, I really like the five of the, um, you might like to put it specifically in the number of projects that are in front of you and the board, and I love seeing the current status of these projects, um, so many of these are pretty, it's kind of hard to, they're done by five, but, um, I have public safety radio system, as I understand, that system's in poor condition, and for me, anything that negatively affects public safety should be a priority. To establish a finance, we sound capital program, um, I think that that capital plan will be a blueprint, um, on which we move forward, without it, we won't have a basis for the decisions we make about capital projects and expenditures, and I look forward to the guidance of that, of course, coming to buy it for us. Broadband, we've already identified the county's critical need for adequate broadband, without it, we just have a variety of opportunities to improve economic development and improve quality of education for students. The animal shelter, uh, we've already publicly discussed, um, many times, the need for a new facility, um, with the information of what we're taking from the studies and meetings analysis, with the help of the volunteers, cares committee, and the generous donation on the site by Mr. Ozil, we may break for first drives, and I'd hate to see us rock the ball in this one. And finally, and, and I don't think this was specifically listed on your project list, but you had IT categories, um, cybersecurity is always a huge concern for me, I think it's one of the biggest threats for businesses and municipalities, and breaches in information security can be devastating, and bring operations to a halt. So those are, are five, not, not necessarily in certain order.
All right, did you get those?
Just certification, uh, uh, so number sixteen is broadband IT, but that's, that's different, what you.
I've got broadband, and I've got cybersecurity listed.
I got you, okay. You're right with the cybersecurity.
Supervisor Simmons.
Um, my first one would be the same, it'd be number twenty-nine, that would be my first. Um, and the second.
I'm not that confused, I'm, I do it myself.
Just go to the next one, Kate.
Okay, that would be, uh, Mr. Rourke.
What's scary here is everything hitting my tops up. Everything in charge has to fucking my tops up, because I came up with ten, but some of them are rolls into others. My number one priority was the public radio system. That. Now, I'm going to pull Steve Bowen on, we just had a conversation.
Yep.
Stop doing seven, you're dead, bud.
I got ten, I said it was in my top, so. Um, the new sheriff's office, I think, is a blueprint to start the complex. The sheriff's department is law is overdue to be updated, along with that radio system. The complex can continue being built on behind the sheriff's department. So what I was, what I was concerned with is that if we're taking on any debt to consider the public radio system, a new sheriff's office and animal shelter as one debt.
Y'all are making my test very difficult over here.
No, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, your whole thing, I'm looking at, if we're taking on the debt, this will be the expenditure that we will be taking on, so that's the reason why I wasn't, but number one is the public safety radio system with the new sheriff's office, with the other consideration, for any debt being taken on, be that animal shelter. Okay, my number two was, and of course, the public radio system was number twenty-one, I'm sorry, number two is the, which encompasses forty-six through forty-eight, the solid waste stuff. Because I believe where we're going, you know, roughly, it takes five years to get the permit. We need to know what all our options are, and, you know, also encompass all three channels, and that study for all the ways as well, moving forward. Number three was, and of course, that was forty-six through forty-eight, or solid waste stuff, um.
I like the way you're grouping these to, to keep it under, to, to keep it at five, nice, nice work.
Right. Um, number three is number twenty-six, establish finance and sound capital plan. I, I think the expenditures I spoke about in item one, I think those are necessities that we're going to have to make happen. Um, but even beyond that, we need that financial sound capital plan. Number four was broadband, continuing on with that. Number, my number five encompass thirty-six and thirty-seven, which is economic development, one of the big ideas that was presented in VACO was site preparedness. And I had some information to pass to you from the Virginia Economic Development Pro- Program.
No partnership?
Yeah.
Partnership.
Yeah, they've, uh, contacted me this week, uh, they want some site planning and stuff, so, um. And I'll just finish it out. Number six, twenty-nine courthouse facility. Number seven was the joint IT staff, um. I, I believe we absolutely need that shared purpose. Um, number eight, I had this assistance to the citizens and the staff, basically, number three, the, the upgraded website, number twelve, the electronic filing, which should also remedy ten and eleven. Find an easy to use, no fee online system, so citizens can pay their bills online without this egregious fees. Um, number seven I had was the pay scale personnel policy. In twenty-twenty, uh, Chairman Shepperton and I spoke about it, and it was mentioned to staff then, but more recently, it came up with one of the same solutions that was mentioned in twenty-twenty, which was finding newly adopted personnel policy from Noddy County, and change the necessary wording, um, to get, put it in place over the old ninety-five mark. I think that's kind of a, a, maybe an easy do, to just kind of get off the list, but a, but a necessary do. And number ten was, uh, three public hearings, so we can move forward and make a decision on boundary line adjustment, also reducing taxes on those that are sixty-five and older. And also the Cox Road water line, one of those three public hearings, because we can't take any action without having those public hearings. Um, and as far as the, uh, boundary line adjustment goes, um, that work session should include, uh, Noddy County as the board, the board supervisors host a discussion on the town crew's request for boundary line adjustment. I believe the town crew of Burple should have all or as many of their respective elected bodies and staff as possible attend the work session as well. The request was formally presented to us some months ago, March twenty-twenty-one, to be exact, and I believe it is time to address this matter as soon as possible in an attempt to get factual information out publicly, and to see if a reasonable agreement can be reached to satisfy all parties involved. It's been made abundantly clear that outside influences are creating division and ill will between two of our towns, and it's time to attempt to reach a respectful resolution that is best for Noddy County citizens. The citizens in the town crew in Burple are all Noddy County citizens, they all deserve to hear what the intentions are in this process, and what other officials' agendas are, and to have all statements on record by those officials.
Okay.
Our real plans are to have on the next week's agenda the boundary line adjustment and, and the, obviously, like, crew and.
Crew, crew, crew has been asked to be on the agenda. Uh, I've spoken with the town manager, uh, Mr., Mr. Thrower, uh, over the, uh, New Year's weekend. Um, what I have suggested is that they appear for a presentation and then have the item later in the agenda. Uh, I've made the same suggestion to, uh, the mayor slash town manager for, uh, Burkeville, and, um, he was in the office today on another matter, um, very cordial, everything's cordial. Um, he was going to get back with me and let me know, uh, whether or not, um, they wanted to take that option or, or, or not. I'm kind of scouring the office, of course, this was, like, like many of the items on this list, that, that they were in projects running before I got here, so I'm still scouring the office, pulling together some documents, and we'll share a fairly significant document packet with, with the board. Uh, so that's what we're saying, yes, that, that item will be on the agenda. If I could, I would like to point out, uh, that item eighteen, um, is complete. That is the, um, selection of the county attorney. But I bring that up because, uh, to Mr. Rourke's point regarding the personnel policy, if you'll recall, that RFP was, was written with the, uh, concept of whichever firm was retained being able to do that workforce. Uh, Sands Anderson has experience with that. We do have a proposal from them, which I'll be sharing with the board later, um, and, um, that, uh, that one may be closer to completion than, than we realize. Um, they're, they're not going to, we had a very candid conversation, uh, they're not going to re, they're not going to reinvent the wheel, we're going to use a lot of what is already out there, uh, from other similarly situated, uh, lo- uh, localities. As you can, as you know, uh, personnel has taken up a lot of attention with the county in my brief tenure, so we want to g- address that. And the thought process behind tying that to the selection of the county attorney was, at the end of the day, they're the ones that may have to defend you in an action. So we'd rather have them from the, from the beginning to the end of a process. But number eighteen, you can mark as complete. Ms. Simmons, come back to you. All right, Ms. Simmons.
First one was number twenty-nine.
Number twenty-nine, again, the courthouse facility.
Um, the second was fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight is the NG nine.
Anything dealing with nine-one-one with the upgrade with the system.
Okay, so the, the communication system overall, okay.
Um, number three was IT.
Okay.
Um, number four. That's number five, the financial software. And number five. It's twenty-one, there's public safety radius.
Okay, that links back to your nine-one-one. Well, well, we see how well my plan worked, Mr. Bowen, that's okay, that's okay, we're, we're good, we're good.
You are, so, um, so number.
I won't forget you, Mr. Vaughn, I won't forget you.
Number twenty-nine, uh, for that.
Yes, sir. Yes.
But really, to establish the financial sound capital plan, okay, number one, then start looking at, so, so number twenty-six is number two.
Okay.
Number three, I'm going to get down to the global facility. Done. Too long, too long. Number four, I agree with, um, I would agree with that, IT, broadband, uh, so number sixteen, and, um, and I, I had number five as, as the versus, as number twenty-eight is number five, as emergency operators, so, I'm, I'm coming back on that, because if you caught that plan, that may be part of that. So I'm with John Roy on that economic development side, we don't have anything on the west end of the county, so that's a problem for me.
Okay. Those were like twenty, that was one of your groupings, Mr. Rourke.
So that'd be number thirty-seven, economic.
That, yes, I had to find, I had to find his, I had to find his groupings, okay.
Thirty-six and thirty-seven.
Okay, we got it.
Yeah, it kind of goes yellow, that number one.
All right.
All right.
Mr. Vaughn. Well, that, that kind of balances out for Mr. Rourke, doesn't it?
Yes. I'm going to combine one and sixteen. Broadband and cybersecurity, that's, that's a good. Number twenty-six is something that we're going to have to get a hold of our finances. That's the most important thing, that's why I'm discussing this. Now, the people want to tell us, we, we got plenty of money, let's see what you can. And we've got a lot of money, and, and we've got a hold of that. And number twenty-nine, we'll be considering that in the final, uh, we need to begin the process of building, of building that courthouse that will accomplish the economic service in the back, communication areas, but we need to start, the long way to go is to know our cost. That's my.
Twenty-six, five years.
But I see financial, yeah, one of the top, uh, concerns we're going to have.
And, and I believe we're going to be taking a big bite on that in the weeks and a couple of months ahead. All right, um.
I was scared, I was going to mess it up, y'all messed it up.
So we had its color-coded plan and everything, but that's okay. So, we had its color-coded plan and everything, but that's okay. So, would you like to turn it around so most people can see it? Yeah, yeah, that, that's fine. That's fine. Couldn't keep up after six. Okay, alright. So, what I would like to do is come back and try to decipher some of this and figure out which ones, you know, and I, I took notes as we were going, uh, it's a good thing we have playback as well. And kind of calculate out, um, and, and develop a scoring methodology that, you know, somebody's number one is worth five points, somebody's number five is worth one point and kind of see where they, they came, came out. I might get down to decimal points with, with you, yes. Um, but we'll, uh, we'll, we'll kind of pull this together and get it back to you in your, your next board packet and let you know what looks like ranked out as your top five, six projects. Um, it looks pretty clear to me that, yes, um, the public radio system has come out pretty high, as has the courthouse facility plan. I will tell you that in their own analysis of what we can bite off and what we can chew, uh, Davenport indicated that these were two projects that we could take on without too much problem. Uh, and that, um, there is an opportunity for some, uh, taking on some additional debt. Right now, interest rates are very low, very favorable. And to secure for the county a bond rating, we would need to take on some debt. We really don't have a good history, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, I know there, there are some outstanding loans right now, but those are being dropped down very, very quickly. Um, if the county did nothing for ten years, it would be absolutely, totally, completely debt-free. You can't wait ten years to start your next project. We, we definitely, we're definitely moving in that direction. The sheriff and I have had some conversations and we've discussed from some prior experiences how great it is to have your sheriff's office on one end of the building, your communication center next door to that, and then an open, multipurpose space that can be used for staff training, events, retirement functions, whatever you want to call it. But also that could double as your EOC. And then you've got your communications right there beside you. And then the rest of, sort of a first floor plan would be, what are those high-traffic offices? Planning, zoning, treasurer, commissioner, you know, commissioner of revenue. But then, again, as we've pointed out, because of the facilities, the study that's already been done on what's here now, how are you going to reuse those structures, if you choose to reuse those structures? Right, and they're, they're, they, we discussed the rural, uh, rural development funds were discussed yesterday. They, they're the folks that are, are going to be able to really help us out and, and identify those sources. That, that's the case with everything. That is the case with everything. Uh, and I, I think that's something that, uh, we'll have to discuss also during the budget. You know, I've had a couple of conversations the last few days about, can anybody name me any one thing that hasn't gone down, that has gone down in cost? Uh, in my lifetime, bread's gone up, gas has gone up, milk has gone up, houses have gone, everything's gone up. You've got to adjust to that outside environment that you're trying to work in. But as you look at the list, there were some things that weren't mentioned, and that kind of helps set the priority as well. Not that they aren't important or they don't need some attention, um, but, um. And we're hoping, we're, we were, we're hoping to show you in a couple of months, some bill comparisons that we're already, we've, we've already, we've already saved some, we think we've already saved some money. And we'll keep it updated as we go along.
And clearly, like I said, my top seven, everybody had it. But I just want to take us back to a discussion that we had after we came out of closed session one night about the landfill. Because other than myself, no one mentioned that. It takes, if we apply it right now, it takes five years to get new permanent. And five years for being the last save. That's without any study, that's without any expectations of what we're going to do. We're very unknown, we can't pray anybody to take it out, what we're going to do. So, I just want to, I know we had touched on that once before, so it's, uh.
That's, that's what I mean, it's tough, I mean, and that's part of operations too.
Yeah, that's going to be a huge goal if we go, but I think, so if we wait another year and re-proact, there are three years, we'll be three years into the new one, with only, so that would put us, if we apply a permanent, two years into the last save.
Yeah, I think, for us to make an informed decision right there, John, just, not just, it's like we need a landfill block in front of us, like showing us what we, what we have. Cause I, I, I really have a hard time understanding, you know, it's, it's hard for me to get that wrapping on my head, you know, so. It's, whatever you do, it's going to involve three times, because they, we get in a lot of trash as well. Whatever decisions they make, they ought to be included in the process.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And that's why I, I'd say, you know, waste.
Uh, Mr. Bowen, to your clock idea, I'll reach out to Draper Aiden and see if they can give us sort of a project timeline. And then, uh, Mr. Vaughn, to your point, I, I met with two of the three, uh, town managers face-to-face today and one of the things that we discussed was landfill. Uh, they're, they're aware of the situation. I'm pretty sure the third is as well. Well, if there are any other questions, that's, that's, that, thank you for your patience in this exercise. I think, uh, we'll come back, we'll do some, we'll, we'll apply methodology and explain the methodology to you and let you know where these projects ranked out collectively. I thank y'all for this.
He doesn't give me that.